Good evening and welcome everyone to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled meeting for this Tuesday, June 23, 2020. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Board members are attending both in person, as you can see some of us here, and telephonically. So I'll take a quick roll call. Member Gallo?
Hi, I'm Madam Chair.
Welcome, Member Gallo. Member Lopez?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Member Cobert.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Vice Chair Gould.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Gordon. Dr. Kester-Dental?
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening, Member Bird.
Good evening, Chair.
And let me try again, Dr. Gordon. All right, Dr. Gordon will be with us, I know, in just a minute.
No, I've been on the line.
Thank you. There we go. Dr. Gordon is present. We're all present either in person or telephonically. Due to phase two of the Governor's Plan, we're now able to gather in groups of 50 or less. So tonight, we have several board members in the room, along with several members of staff and the public who have chosen to attend this meeting. We wanted to make sure that you were aware that we are following our CDC guidelines, of course. We have a six-feet social distancing spacing throughout the room and have limited the number in the room to, as I said a minute ago, no more than 50 people. Masks are required when social distancing can't be accomplished, however, to ensure that the public can hear us. We won't likely be wearing masks here at the dais when we're speaking, as everyone in the room answered two simple health questions before they arrived and they had their temperature checked before they were allowed inside of the chambers. Please note that this time, we are not shaking hands, so if we are recognizing anyone here, we won't be doing that, and we have hand sanitizers provided throughout the room. Thank you so much for helping us keep everyone safe. As far as overflow purposes, if we meet the limit of 50 people in the room, the lobby is open proceeding where guests can view the board meeting on the monitors and they can attend and speak when called on. Again, thank you so much for participating in tonight's meeting, and now we will begin our meeting, as we begin every meeting, with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask if Member Bird would lead us in both. Member Bird?
Yes, Sam?
Tonight, we have invited a special guest to be honored for his service and dedication to the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools. Mr. Orman Yildin has been on the Foundation's Board now for 13 years and has served as Chair during a crucial time when we transitioned the Foundation in-house. Vice Chair Pam Gould, who represents the school board as a part of the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools, is on the line with us, of course, and I'm going to call on Vice Chair to make a few comments and tell us a little bit more about Mr. Yildin and his contributions. Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you so much, Chair. Orman, I'm sorry, I'm not there in person, but I am watching on the screen, so I will see you when they show you. It is truly an honor to be able to honor a person who's had great vision and been a tremendous partner and supporter of Orange County Public Schools for so many years. Orman was the chairman when I was appointed to be the liaison with the Foundation, and we recognized that the Foundation probably needed to align a little bit better with the school board's strategic plan that they had spent so much time on. And as we went through that, there were some major reorganizational changes that the Foundation went through and alignments that had happened, and it happened with great ease and smoothness because of Orman's great character, his forthrightness, and his ability to really facilitate bringing so many people together. And I want to tell you a little bit about the results of that realignment. Not only have we continued to support so many important initiatives for Orange County Public Schools, but revenues have been gained by 39% and an additional $1.15 million. We've seen more donors come on by about 74%. We have more partnerships with our local schools and their philanthropic efforts, which prevents them from having to have additional administrative costs, which is very important that all those dollars can go right into school programs, and those funds have gone up 151%. Our investment funds, which means that we're doing things right, has gone up 110%, and our expenses, only 14% with all that activity while fundraising expenses are down 60%. Along with that alignment, we really had a merger of our volunteers and our partners in Eds so that there is one voice that we speak with to the community, and it has really enhanced our relationship. So, Orman, thank you for your leadership and for all that you have done to move generations forward of our students and families for Orange County Public Schools.
Mr. Yildin, I hope you're going to provide us with a few comments, observations of your 13 years, advice, and some explanation of why you decided to do this and what does it take to keep you.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for those wonderful words. Board member Pam Gould really couldn't have happened without you. You know, sometimes they say, may you live in interesting times. In my case, may you be Board Chair of a voluntary organization during interesting times, and in my case, I kind of became after several years on the Board. It was my turn to serve as Board Chair, and, you know, serving as the Chair of a Board that really was functioning very well. The Foundation for Orange County Public Schools, we were really executing our mission, and then got the very surprise information that during my tenure, our outstanding Executive Director Cindy Williams was stepping down to go pursue some other opportunities. And so at that time, the day before that, I had a magnificent head of hair. So, like I said, the interesting times, and that was when we started taking a step back and saying, hey, wait a minute, you know, are there some, you know, other ways that we can think about the Foundation? And I think Pam Gould was the first one where the light bulb went off and said, you know, we had always been acting in support of the district. One of Pam's ideas was, well, maybe we can find a way to work together, not just in sport, but, you know, together with the school board to actually increase our ability to achieve our mission. And we had several meetings with Superintendent Jenkins and Scott Howitt and many others with the district. And I also want to thank one more time our outgoing, at the time, Executive Director Cindy Williams, because she really gave us the gift of staying on for several months. We asked her to and said, look, we're trying to think about a new way of structuring the Foundation, and she agreed to stay on for several months to give us the time to figure that out, and that meant that we could really put our, you know, thoughts together. We created subcommittees, joint committees with the district, and that gave us the time to think about a new way of structuring it instead of just, you know, panicking to try to keep the plane in the air. So I want to thank her for that, but I also want to thank the leadership of the district. You know, even though any time you're trying to sort of merge two organizations, there's always some, you know, hiccups and always some questions, but the leadership of the district really did a great job of thinking through a lot of the issues, and I want to thank Superintendent Jenkins for all of her hard work and the leadership she provided to her leadership staff to make that happen. I also want to thank our current President, Scott Howitt, and Vice President Debbie Pedraza, who've done a great job kind of taking, helming the leadership of that. I think everybody on the Board has been really pleased and excited with their leadership of the Foundation. I think two things that we've observed, one from the Foundation's side, we have found new ways of solving problems from this new structure. Things, sometimes things that we had to spend money to go outsource for certain services, you know, Scott and Debbie are like, hold on, you know, we might be able to perform those services in-house, saving those expenses to the Foundation and actually being able to deploy our donor's money even more towards our mission, not just for overhead expenses. I think for the district's side, they found a lot of ways, saying, hey, wait a minute, we can use the Foundation for some of these activities. I think, you know, Scott and Debbie have really brought an entrepreneurial attitude towards the Foundation, really a lot of creativity, you know, things that, you know, we didn't realize were possible as Board members really became achievable through their leadership. So I want to thank them. I want to thank Superintendent Jenkins. I want to thank Pam Gould and the entire, you know, school board for all of your help and support of the Foundation. I am stepping down from the Board after 13 years. I'm still staying on some committees and helping out, but I will tell you that I'm really excited by our current Board slate, which I think is going to be later on in this evening, for approval, and I think the Foundation is in outstanding hands. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. You know, I've known about the Foundation for quite a long time, and you would think, having been here now a year and a half, it's almost a little embarrassing to admit, but that overview you just gave me taught me so much more about the history and some of the unique benefits of the way it works today. It makes perfect sense. There are things that we can do with no real added costs that the Foundation was probably paying for and vice versa. That is so, that's very, that's just, anyway, awesome. I'm always excited that we have a Foundation. I think it's wonderful, but thank you for the learning opportunity as well, and thank you for the years of service and obviously your passion and commitment to public education. We all don't sit up here for any other reason other than we believe this changes the world, and you obviously share that vision, and we greatly appreciate it. So, all right, we will move on, and you are free to go if you want to. You've put in 13 years, but you can hang around as well. Thank you. All right, Dr. Jenkins, do we have any newly appointed administrators?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we have two to present to you tonight. The first is Melissa K. Gordon. She was Acting Principal at West Orange High. She will be the new Principal at Camelot Elementary School. And Antonio Roman, who was Assistant Principal at University High, will be the new Principal at Lakeview Middle School. We will certainly bring them to meet Board members once we are out of this limited meeting format, but they are listening and happy to be promoted.
All right, well, thank you. Well, since they're listening and we're happy to promote them, let's give them a round of applause. All right, in terms of strategic plan update, Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you. It is with great pleasure we bring to you the next stage of our strategic plan. Kind of hard to remember that the Board went through extensive work sessions and retreats and planning and data review to renovate our strategic plan. We use the term renovate because it's a major overhaul so that this Board would take ownership of a plan that is lasting over the next several years. And it is intended that when the Superintendent and school board put together this plan, we also took it out to the community to seek input from any of our constituents, all of our employees. School principals had conversations with their SACs and PTAs and others to see if we had captured everything that we needed to include in our strategic plan for the next five years. And so the Board came together and agreed upon new vision statement values, mission statement values, and objectives. All of those, if you recall, were renovations above the line. Previous additions that we had made and adjustments we had made to the plan were below the line, reported to the Board about on a five-year schedule. This was a chance to renovate above the line. Very pleased with those outcomes, with what the Board was able to agree to, and here's why I think it's important. If Board members change over, retire, move on, if superintendents retire and move on, this community, this organization, has a strategic plan that should create stability. You've heard the analogy before, it's one of my favorites. If we are on a train trying to make it up the side of the mountain, periodically the state intervenes and makes that incline even steeper to get our children up the side of that mountain, it is helpful that the train not have to stop on a regular basis as we exchange elected officials or as we exchange superintendents. In public K-12 education, if there is a jointly-owned strategic plan that is also shared and endorsed by the entire community, it creates stability to help keep the momentum going to get that train up the side of the mountain, as opposed to stopping every time there's a transition and then having to gain momentum again to make it up that incline. So very pleased that this Board engaged, came up jointly with the administration with what I believe is a phenomenal strategic plan that helped catapult and direct our community and what we do for our children over the next several years. What we have today is Christine Dankie is going to share with you some of the below-the-line. So once you did that handoff, when you officially approved the newly renovated strategic plan, then staff had to get busy on some of the particulars. How are you going to measure? What goals will you put on the scorecard to prove, to convey to the Board that you're meeting those six objectives that were agreed upon? So Christine Dankie will certainly walk us through it. We'll hear any questions, comments from you as well, but we are well on our way to implementing our new strategic plan. Dr. Dankie?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
As Dr. Jenkins shared, the purpose of this presentation is to share with you all and our community stakeholders the outcome of this work. It's work of cross-divisional teams in relation to our newly renovated strategic plan, OCPS 2025. So as you recall, December 10, 2019, you as the school board unanimously approved the drivers of the new strategic plan, and last month, the Communications Division shared with you the outstanding communications plan, including this new campaign, "Our Promise, Your Support, Their Success." As a reminder, you can see here our 2025 vision, "To ensure every student has a promising and successful future." Our mission declares, "With the support of families and the community, we create enriching and diverse pathways that lead our students to success." Our six organizational values are innovation, respect, collaboration, integrity, inclusion, and equity. And the six overarching objectives that will guide our work over the next five years are high expectations for student learning, student social and emotional well-being, a dedicated and high-quality team, positive climate and safe environment, efficient operations, and an engaged and invested community. In the spirit of the district's core values, a strategic plan steering committee was established and named Team OCPS 2025. It had representation from all the divisions. Each division completed that environmental scan using the SWOT tool to uncover strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. School-based leaders provided input at monthly meetings, and student voices were heard, represented by those on the Superintendent Student Roundtable Leadership Council. Feedback was considered, and utilizing these six board-established objectives, these cross-divisional work groups collaborated to define the objectives, create the goals, align the strategies, and define the key performance indicators, or KPIs. So the first step undertaken was to create a description of each of the objective phrases. These sentences have undergone multiple rounds of review and revision and are intended to add clarity. You see here the descriptors for the first three objectives. To describe high expectations for student learning, we note that we provide enriching and diverse pathways that focus on teachers, students, and the curriculum. In describing student social and emotional well-being, we acknowledged SEL is still somewhat educational jargon, so we leaned on the CASL definition of the term. CASL is the Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning, and it's a trusted source for knowledge about high-quality, evidence-based, social and emotional learning. You see here their definition, which states that students will be able to acquire and apply the five SEL competencies: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. The dedicated and high-quality team objective reminds us to focus on our core purpose, empower employees, and maximize organizational teamwork and effectiveness. Moving on, here are the descriptors for the final three objectives. Under positive climate and safe environment, we seek to create the conditions for learning and growth by providing a safe environment for students and adults. We define efficient operations as streamlining processes, optimizing business performance, and managing our resources responsibly. And in describing our engaged and invested community, we'll leverage the time, talent, and resources of our community to support student success. After we use these descriptors to establish a common understanding of the objectives, our teams analyze the data to define the goals for OCPS 2025. Our goal statements describe specifically what we will address in the short and long term. These goals don't change the objective, but offer more realistic, specific, and tangible statements that provide direction. Let's take a look at the goals under our first objective. For high expectations for student learning, our goals are threefold. One, close the achievement gap. Two, promote early literacy. And three, offer multiple pathways to success. Our teams also developed key performance indicators that can be monitored, analyzed, and shared with the Board on an annual basis. These KPIs offer high-level measures of success for each of our goals. The KPIs to measure our work in closing the achievement gap will be reported by both a reduction in the percent of low-performing schools based on the percent of DNF schools and a decrease in the number of schools identified for targeted support and intervention due to low-performing subgroup. To measure how well we're promoting early literacy in our pre-K through grade-two classrooms, we'll measure and report on how well we increase the percent of third-grade students achieving at grade level or above on performance on the standardized assessment, English Language Arts. And in terms of measuring how well we offer multiple pathways, we seek to increase participation and performance in meaningful and accelerated pathways. This is inclusive of Advanced Placement, or AP, International Baccalaureate, or AIB, the Cambridge Advanced International Certificate of Education, or ACE, and dual enrollment, as well as Career and Technical Education Industry Certification. All four of these KPIs, under high expectations for student learning, are directly aligned to the Florida Department of Education's State Accountability System and mirror the data that Florida is reporting on the Department of Education's strategic plan. Now let's examine the goals and KPIs that have been set for student social and emotional well-being. Under SEL objective, our goal is to develop character and social-emotional skills. We plan to measure this with two KPIs. One, an increase in students' positive perceptions of the classroom and school-wide culture, and two, an increase in teachers' self-reported SEL knowledge and skill set. Moving on to the third objective, dedicated and high-quality team. There are three separate goals in this area. One, attract high-quality candidates for career opportunities throughout OCPS as measured by an increase in the efficiency of recruitment efforts by diversifying touchpoints to include both in-person and virtual connections. Two, promote employees' physical and emotional well-being as measured by increasing the use of district wellness resources. And three, to develop and retain effective and diverse personnel as measured by increasing the retention rate of instructional and non-instructional personnel. The fourth objective is positive climate and safe environment. Our goal here is to maintain safe, healthy, and inclusive learning and working environments. We'll measure success in two areas. By increasing the district's internal and external satisfaction rating, as measured by the yearly survey conducted as a part of the Cognia accreditation process, and the second KPI here is to increase students' self-reported sense of belonging at their Next, we'll discuss efficient operations. In terms of efficient operations, our goal will be to deliver high-quality service by maximizing resources to support identified needs. In this area, we also have two KPIs. One, to open all new buildings on time and on or under budget, and two, to increase the amount of available resources through innovation and collaboration. And last but not least, let's discuss our engaged and invested community. Here, we seek to provide a community-wide network of support for our children and families. We'll measure the total number of volunteers and increase the total dollars raised by the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools. Starting next school year, we'll begin to measure and report on the attainment of these 10 goals and 15 district scorecard KPIs. Notably, in the development of this process, and whenever possible, our teams work to align the OCPS 2025 KPIs with measures already reported by partner organizations, such as the Council of Great City Schools, the Orlando Economic Partnership, and their Leap to Tomorrow vision, and also to the program goals of My Brother's Keeper. And with that, we'll turn the presentation back to Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you, Dr. Dankie. Members of the Board, as you can see, we have been busy at work since you made that handoff to us with your official approval of the new strategic plan, the newly renovated strategic plan. Certainly, it is a work in progress that we will continue to adjust and try to incorporate best practices and ideas. Happy to listen to your discussion, answer any questions you might have. Madam Chair?
Thank you, and for the benefit of Board members that are sitting here with me, we have a way of trying to keep track of everybody's indication of wanting to speak in time. So Amy, Ms. Enval, is in charge of that. If you wish to be recognized, instead of using the queuing system we have here, if you would text Ms. Enval or raise your hand. At this time, I'm looking to see if we have anybody wishing to speak on this issue. We have Vice Chair Gould. Vice Chair Gould, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as we get to review this strategic plan again this evening, there's a few things that I think we have done well and that we can even highlight further. And in this time where we really are focusing on the cues of different cultures and equality and trying to build bridges between peoples and communities, I think our values are extremely important and what we have outlined there, because every one of those will get us moving in the same direction. Innovation, respect, collaboration, integrity, inclusion, and equity, and I know we had a lot of discussions around that. The other elements that I think we have really teased out a bit more, and having been the beneficiaries, being part of both strategic planning sessions with the last Board and now with this one, I think we've really teased out some wonderful measurable items for bringing the community closer, but also on how we fit into this community as an employer, as an economic driver, and as the key to the future success with our students being our future leaders and citizens. So I just wanted to highlight those few things and really share how pleased I am to see how this has flushed out, and it's a wonderful reminder this week after such tumultuous times.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Let's hear from Dr. Kester-Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to echo what Member Gould just said about the values. I like how they are so prominently displayed, and I hope that going forward throughout the school year, that we are able to highlight them and show examples of those values at work in our schools by students and teachers and other employees. And another element that I really think is really important is that And another element that I really think is really important is that the social and emotional well-being of our students was teased out to show the five competencies, which it's kind of a vague term, the social-emotional well-being. And I think those five competencies really help to create a common vocabulary among people who are talking about that issue. And it gives direction to our teachers as well as ways that we're going to actually implement that program. And I think that's really strong, and I like that you used the castle competencies. And it looks great. Thank you so much for all the work that you did putting that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the team has done an incredible job of taking the direction from the board and providing so much more substance and organization around it. And they continue to do that. I'm just at an incredible meeting with the communications team the other day, talking about how we will go about rolling this out. But I think, as Vice Chair Gould said, our values are, nothing right this minute compares to me, to the importance of having a core set of values, equity being at the heart of those values. And I think if we can communicate that to every teacher, every child, every parent, every person that interacts with our children, that this is an absolute must. This is the day, this is the time, this is the end of inequity, this is the time when we have to have equity and respect and inclusion. And we get there through collaboration. And gosh, if innovation isn't important to us right now with what we're going through with COVID, but those values are so real and so potentially powerful. And now we just have to make sure we bring them to life in every single heart and mind in Orange County Public Schools. So exciting opportunity, a lot of work, and it's not easy. And I don't mean to dismiss for one minute that there's problems out there, but boy, is there potential. So, yeah. So let's, if we have no further comments from board members, Ms. Dankin, Dr. Dankin, awesome job, thank you. And Dr. Jenkins, we will move on then. Dr. Jenkins, the agenda, we discussed it briefly at pre-agenda meeting. You have a change to the posted agenda?
There is one change, Madam Chair, members of the board. Item 1401 is being withdrawn. That is request approval of Design Amendment Number Three for Orange Technical College Westside Campus. It will be brought back at a later time.
Oh, and is there a motion to amend the agenda as recommended by the superintendent? So moved. Motion by Member Cobert to amend the agenda. Is there a second by Member Lopez? All in favor of the motion to amend the agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm so sorry. Let me do roll call for the folks on the line. We're all sitting here, and I fell back into my old habits. Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Lopez? Member Cobert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
I didn't call my name, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Dr. Gordon?
I'm voting in favor of it. I just didn't hear you call my name, it's muffled.
That's okay. That's why I circled back again. I was sure you were on the line. So, and I voted in affirmative also. So the motion carries unanimously to amend the agenda. Now that we've amended the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move the adoption.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Motion by Dr. Gordon is our second. Second by Member Bird. Roll call, vote again. Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Lopez? Member Cobert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
Aye.
Dr. Castredal?
Aye.
Dr. Bird?
Aye.
And I likewise vote in the affirmative. The amended motion, the amended agenda is now adopted. We are going to now move on to public hearing 3.01, and Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we actually have several policies that are before the board for final approval. They have gone through work session and appropriate rural development workshops and have reached now this final point in their revision before the board for a final vote. After you hear any input from the public, this final opportunity, then we will look for the board's approval. And I believe your parliamentarian has indicated you can take them all up as one or separate them at your leisure, at your pleasure.
Yeah, and if I would, there's three callers that are on the line for JIC, so I would not recommend you take them all up at one at this point.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's anybody who wants to speak on that.
Yeah, I was preferring to take them up one at a time. It'll take just a minute longer, but I think it'll be a bit less confusing for the board. So we have also checking, I think, all of these speaker cards. These are folks that are in the audience. Welcome to our meeting. It's so terrible to say, not fun for you guys. It's fun for us to have you all present. It's been a long time since we've had people in the audience that came to speak to us. So it's exciting to have people with us. We have eight speaker cards for JIC, and we have, how many callers on the line?
Three.
On the same subject?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, those in the audience, let's take you all first, since you had the drive down and the drive back. We'll start with Dana and board members. You're fine with hearing from the public before comments from board members? Thank you, thank you. So we'll start with Dana and, or Donna. Donna? Okay. I would try at your last name, but I'm gonna mess it up.
It's okay.
Chaconne?
Yes.
Welcome. You have, if you can give your name and address to the record, even though I have it, and then you'll have three minutes for your comments. And again, we're thrilled to have you here.
Good afternoon, my name is Donna Chaconne. My address is 9948 Shadow Creek Drive, Orlando, Florida 32832. First off, I would like to thank the school board for the opportunity to speak today. I am going to be the student body president at Lake Nona High School for the 2020-2021 school year. And today, I am speaking on behalf of Orange County students as well as students from my own school. We have found that the dress code in our school district unfairly targets female students by banning clothing that is commonly worn. Female students have been kicked out of classes and per seductive or suggestive looks and comments from older students. We have felt the eyes of 3,000-plus students as we get paraded from around the buildings by faculty. Instead of being able to focus on our studies, young women have had to sacrifice our comfort as our bodies are judged as a distraction. The enforcement of the dress code against female students who are judged as distractions also shows the little faith that the school district shows in young men. Through their actions, adults have said that young men can't control their own sexual impulses if a female enters a classroom with leggings. Do we have such little faith in our young men? Instead, we should be teaching these young men that sexual harassment assault is absolutely never okay, regardless of what a young woman is wearing at school. And it starts with making changes to our own dress code. I can distinctly remember moments where I was more concentrated on the length of my own T-shirt than paying attention in my class. Moments where I was caught up in making sure I avoided a certain teacher that was most likely to dress code me because I would be sent home and I would miss a test that day that I could not afford to miss. Additionally, in the moments that young girls are dress coded, the confusion that encircles the environment is completely obscured. Moments where admin have to call in other staff members and ask them for their opinion on whether or not a student should be dress coded over the four-finger rule. The current dress code in place is not only perplexing individuals, but also paralleling in effect of a waste of classroom instructional time for students and staff. Under Level One offenses, the lengthy punishment, including detention, is unconscious. And with these changes voting that are gonna be voted on today are not close to enough for what we really need, and is a start to change. It's a start to change to what Orange County Public Schools stands for, and a start to change for students picking up after years of silence, for advocating equality. I would like to thank District Seven member Ms. Bird for bringing attention to this issue that affects us daily. And school board members, I ask of you today that you consider female students and male students when creating a safe and comfortable environment for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Isabel Parme?
Yes.
Hi, Isabel.
Hi. If we could have you speak up just a little bit more, we're having, maybe step a little bit closer. The public's having a hard time.
Really?
The public's having a hard time.
They couldn't hear our last speaker?
No, it was very dim.
Oh, wow.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And if I may, so if you step a little bit closer, we're trying to keep you safe. Don't put your hands on the mic, because that's how the germs get shared.
I know, we're trying to keep them away from the mic.
Yeah, and they said the sound was sufficient to stand on the black dot. If you take a half step closer, as long as you don't touch it, I think we'll be good.
Okay.
Okay.
Isabel, welcome.
Thank you. Isabel Parme, 1500 Tyrell Drive, Orlando, Florida 32818. I am speaking as a recently graduated senior and former president of the Dr. Phillips High School chapter, as well as Central Florida delegation president. So there was a lot going on in the last year. But as a young girl, I learned a lot about who I was through the dress code, and it kind of taught me that like my body was nothing more than a distraction for young men. And I get that we're all trying to like, you know, kind of keep it in a professional environment, which is why, you know, we dress in ways and everything like that. But to have come 13 years, well, technically 18, both of my parents teach, so, here, so OCPS, but to go 13 years realizing that like there's no faith in young men who I know don't care about whether or not our shoulders are showing because they're just shoulders, it's hard for me to think that, you know? And it really lowers a lot of young girls' self-esteem from a very young age, especially when we're trying to figure out like who we are and what our bodies are doing, and it's all very scary. Thankfully, like I've grown to accept everything, which is great. But yeah, it's hard, and it's also hard to buy clothes that fall within our current dress code because trends, and now trends are off the shoulders and ripped jeans, and you know, everything other than that is like twice as expensive. So I really hope you guys do take this dress code reform into consideration. And I am leaving, but you know, I wanna help the people that are coming in and that are still here, because my sister is still here, so. And with that, I yield the remainder of my time.
Isabel, thank you so much. I know, I'm so proud of these girls. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, it's my job. I got distracted. I'm like looking for somebody to call the next speaker. All right, Samuel, we're proud of you for being here too.
Thank you. Well, good evening, I'm Samuel Diaz, and I currently serve as the student body president for Freedom High School in District Three. First off, I wanted to thank the school board for the opportunity to speak on this agenda item. Standing here in the audience with me were the student body presidents for Lake Nona and Dr. Phillips High Schools. Collectively, we represent nearly 12,000 students in our county. We've come here to say clearly that for too long, this school district, and quite honestly, in districts all around the nation, we've had in place dress codes and shrined in the code of student conduct that have unfairly and systematically targeted the young women in our district. I can distinctly remember wearing tank tops in elementary school, the kind of shirt that you might wear in hot weather, multiple times, and nothing ever really being done about it, and no one having said anything to me. I guess I wasn't distracting enough for my classmates. It wasn't until a girl, a friend of mine, asked me why I was wearing a tank top, that I was puzzled upon realizing that I unknowingly violated the four-finger rule for straps. It was clear to me then, as it is clear to me now more than ever, that there are two different standards for dress codes in the school district. One for our young men and one for our young women, who because of Rules Five and Eleven in the dress code are singled out time and again for being too disruptive in the classroom for the clothes that they wear. And I would note that many in our communities, and indeed in our campuses, feel that these proposals do not go far enough and do not address Rule Two of the dress code, which governs things like patches and holes and articles of clothing like pants and jeans, something I know many want to see changed. But I think it's important to note that progress is progress, and wherever it is to be found, we should advocate strongly in favor of it, as we're doing here today. And to think that dress codes fall under Level One offenses, which mandate parent contact and which open the doors to possibilities of punishments like detention, is unconscionable given how the dress code is currently written. To waste time on enforcing these draconian rules is to waste the potential of our students. In fact, it was State Representative Anna Eskamani who shared her story of having to wait for her single, working father to bring her a new set of clothes while being embarrassingly removed from her classroom, wasting a day's potential of learning. This is a woman who graduated high school more than a decade ago, and we've seen virtually no change since then. Stories like hers continue to permeate in our schools and are a daily occurrence, and they need to stop. We need this change, and we needed it back when I was in second grade, confused as to why I could get away with violating Rule 11 and why my female classmates couldn't. So to the member for District Seven, Ms. Bird, we thank you so much for putting this in the public's attention with your op-ed. To our chairwoman, Ms. Jacobs, thank you for bringing this out for a vote today. And to my member, Ms. Cobert, I hope and I trust that when you take this vote, you land on the right side of history, acknowledging the pleas for equality in our schools that we have brought before you here today. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. We're so proud of you. Awesome. Thank you, don't we? Thank you. Thank you, Samuel.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, my name is Adrian Duran. My address is 4916 Eaglesmere Drive, Apartment 430. I'm a 10th grade student from Dr. Phillips High School and an active member of the Student Council. Being a male and having a perspective on this issue can be difficult, especially since I'm not able to internalize and experience the impacts nearly as much. However, after listening to arguments from both sides, I've heard a common argument from detractors that I feel I can give a better perspective on. A common argument against changes such as the ones being voted on today is that dress code violations will distract boys to such an extreme degree that we will lose our ability to focus. Hearing this as a boy is honestly borderline insulting. Not only does it imply that I will lose my sheer ability to focus due to something as trivial as a shoulder, but it also undermines girls by asserting this false premise to then control the way they dress. I feel that fairness is a moral value that we must seek to uphold. This mentality that the supposed actions of boys should dictate the way girls are allowed to dress acts as an antithesis to the very concept of fairness. I am urging all of you, if this argument holds any weight in your minds, please rid yourselves of it as it demeans boys and it is completely unfair to girls. I do not know the opinions of every single one of you or the way that you're intending to vote. However, I feel that you can agree with me when I say that your primary job as public servant is to manifest the will of the people that you represent. Those of us from Dr. Phillips Student Council made a petition for students to submit if they supported the proposed changes to the dress code. As of right now, we have received over 1,000 students supporting this change. Thomas Jefferson wrote, "Governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." We are seeing an unprecedented amount of public support, especially from students, to make this change. By being public servants, you carry a moral imperative to ensure that students' voices are heard and represented. Let's say that you do not support the change, for whatever reason, personal experiences, how you raised, anything, I can respect that. However, your moral duty as a public servant should supersede any other arguments being weighed in your head. So even if you do not personally agree with changing the dress code, it becomes almost your responsibility to do so due to the massive amounts of public outcry that we are seeing from students. The people most impacted by this change, to uphold your moral promise as a public servant, I urge you to vote in favor of this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have a rule here that we're not allowed to clap in the chambers. So what we normally do when we have a packed house is I tell people that they can raise, they can give a thumbs up, they can raise their hands, they just can't clap. So I just have to get this out of my system. That was awesome. Everyone of you, right? Am I, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Ricky. Ricky Lou? How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hello, my name is Ricky Lou from Dr. Phillips High School, and I will be moving to 11th grade as vice president of Interact Club. I believe that we are all in agreement when I say that the dress code affects girls more than boys. However, it can be pretty embarrassing to have your friend called out in the middle of the halls by an adult for how they are dressed. It can definitely come off as discomforting to be singled out by your teachers in class, especially if they're of the opposite gender. Oftentimes, the responsibility falls upon female teachers to dress code students because male teachers feel uncomfortable dressing, addressing how female students are dressed. If teachers themselves feel uncomfortable dressing students for shoulders of all things, then there's definitely something wrong with the dress code system. After all, they are putting their jobs on the line because they are forced to analyze a student's leggings to make sure they aren't too tight or scrutinize a student's top just to see if their shoulders are distracting the class. I've heard of some teachers who would even go out of their way to talk to a dean about a student's attire. a student's attire, because they find it uncomfortable talking to the students in person. Our learning environment should not be disrupted by this tension between teachers and students over an outdated dress code system. It makes both sides uncomfortable all around, and the dress code should not force teachers to overanalyze a student's bodies and attires, because their job is to educate students, and students shouldn't feel weirded out or worried about their teachers, who they are going to be working with year-round. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Belivo?
Hi, thank you. Good evening, my name is Andrew Belivo, and I'm part of the Dr. Phillips SGA. My address is 5734 Crandell Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32819. Today, I stand in support of eliminating the current dress code policies in Orange County Public Schools that pertain to tight and distracting clothes, and the whiff requirements on straps on shirts. We wish to get rid of these dress code policies, because girls in the education system are being treated unfairly. They are being classified as a distraction due to their bodies being sexualized and objectified. Girls deserve to be respected, especially in an environment as important as a school. However, in today's world, girls are restricted in their ability to express themselves with what they wear, and are penalized harshly when they break these unjust dress code policies. This is especially the case with girls that have curvier figures. I have some friends that have worn the same exact pieces of clothing, but only one of them was dress coded due to their differences in body shape. This shows that girls with curvier appearances get in trouble more often. This is a feature of girls that cannot be changed, so why are we punishing them for it? They're getting pulled out of classes, and even sometimes suspended, due to these policies, which takes away crucial time from their learning. As a male, I have not experienced this as severely as females have, but I want to help them with having their voices be heard about the problems they are facing daily. We have to start listening to the issues that girls across the nation are facing with their dress in schools, and start making a change. Our goal isn't to get rid of the dress code in its entirety, instead, we want to modify it to allow girls to freely express themselves and not feel restricted by the way others negatively view their bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this next one, I'm really struggling with. Laka? La... Okay. Zineb? You're going to help me when you get up here with that first name. Not so good. Thank you. Help me out.
My name is Lala Zinevelmazani.
Thank you.
And my address is 9191 Cypress Cove Drive. I'm from Dr. Phillips High School Student Council. And when speaking about dress code, this change will affect students across Orange County. I would like everyone to specially consider elementary school students, ages 5 to 10. When it comes to dress code, it not only singles out female students, but over-sexualizes young girls. A dress code is put in place to protect students and keep from distracting others. However, telling a first grader that she can't wear her favorite dress because her shoulders are distracting does not protect them, but instead teaches them how to conceal and hide the things that bring them joy, that make them feel like a problem, and lower their self-esteem as well as self-confidence. And to her fellow six-year-old classmates, it's not fair to assume a student of that age can view other students in that way. So if a dress code isn't directed at students, is it directed to teachers or staff? Either way, it is completely inappropriate and unnecessary to set specific guidelines on staffs for students of any age, especially elementary. So I urge you to consider your own daughters, sons, and nieces, and nephews, and how it will impact them when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we have a couple of callers on the line. Pardon me?
Our first caller is Najek Lisby.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Najek Lisby, and my address is 7620 Udine Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32819. Today, I would like to speak about the issue of changing school dress code. I had an experience on the first day of school my freshman year. I decided to wear a shirt that passed the four finger rule. I was used to this rule, because at my middle school, which was also in Orange County, we were allowed to wear shirts as long as they followed the four finger rule. So when I was stopped by an administrator on the first day of school, I was not only embarrassed, but confused on why my shirt was a violation of the dress code. Nowadays, with the constant trends, it can be sometimes hard to find nice, trendy shirts to have a full sleeve on them. I would consider myself a very stylish young lady, and therefore, it can be hard to express myself and still stay in the standards of the dress code. Changing the dress code regarding sleeves on shirts would help me not only express myself with new trends, but prepare me for the freedom that I'm going to be given when I graduate next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Enval was correct. I am so sorry. Sianna Dattani? I am so sorry, I kept seeing you sitting there, and I was feeling like you should be speaking. So I apologize. Your name and address?
Sianna Dattani, 8259 Leddington Circle, Orlando, Florida, 32836. Good evening. My name is Sianna Dattani, and I am the current president of the Dr. Phillips High School Student Government Association. For as long as I can remember, girls in school have been told not to wear clothing that is too revealing or causes disruption, as it directly states in our current dress code. It is unfair to teach our students that what they wear and how they choose to dress is distracting to the learning of others. It is unfair that these policies directly target young girls. Girls should not be taught that they have to control how they dress for the sake of other people. We should be taught that our education is more valuable than the clothes that we wear. But instead, we are taught the exact opposite, when we see our peers being removed from class because the straps on their shirts were considered a distraction. This has detrimental impacts on the self-esteem of young students, already living in an environment where they are struggling with their self-worth. We are taught to pay more attention to whether or not what we are wearing distracts students, which instills a stain on our self-esteem that is hard to reverse. Outside of the classroom, we begin to wonder how others will react to what we are wearing, and this is not a message that we should be teaching our students. Our school sent out a digital petition, asking for student support on this policy change. This was primarily over social media, only accessible to students within Orange County Public Schools, and lasted just five short days. Despite these limitations, we have received over 1,000 positive student responses from over 30 schools in the county. Let this widespread support show you that change is necessary. Over 1,000 students believe that the current policies we have in place are unacceptable. Over 1,000 students have used their voices to advocate for a system that supports equality and fairness in schools. Over 1,000 students understand that no one should be removed from class and lose valuable aspects of their education because of what they are wearing. So I ask, please vote in support of this dress code reform. Allow our school system to teach younger generations that they are not defined by what they are wearing. Let us prioritize education and a learning environment that fosters growth and change. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you consider supporting the vote to change the Orange County Public School dress code policy.
Thank you. All right, we have one or two more speakers? Two more, thank you. Next caller?
Our next caller is Kyla Murphy.
Yes, this is Kyla Murphy. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my address is 2322 Pebble Court, Orlando, Florida, 32837. And I'm calling to follow up about the student code of conduct and the impact of the acknowledgement form on students with disabilities that do not have the reading skills or the cognitive ability to understand what they're being forced to sign at school. I really am urging the board to take a look at that. We've heard from some students tonight regarding dress code and being removed from class. I look at my sons, who may be in, I have two children with disabilities, may be in classroom in music and art, and are being removed from a classroom because they may be stemming or doing something that's related to their disability and the way they self-reviate themselves, and that's a travesty. You guys have been talking about your strategic plan, and inclusion and equity is part of that. But I really have a hard time understanding inclusion when we have segregated, self-contained classrooms, where our children, who have differences or may not present in typical behaviors, are segregated into that classroom and not allowed to actively be a participant or a member within their school celebrations or communities. Equity certainly is not a reading rate of 4.6% for African-American males with disabilities in OCPS. So some of the goals or short-term objectives are great, but very vanilla and generic. It's time to rip the Band-Aid off and really look at some of the glaring issues that are going on with our most vulnerable population, especially the student cone of conduct. I have seen students removed from class for repeating things that they have heard from a movie. I have seen children signing referrals with disabilities who cannot even write, that are in middle school, cannot even spell their name correctly, with their parents not being present. That is outrageous, to hold a child accountable who cannot read and cannot understand what they are being held accountable to. Also, the manifestation determination hearing, I understand that, and it can be removed from the punishment. However, what they're being accused of still is reflective on their educational record and will impact them for the rest of their lives. So again, I wanted to see what the school board or what changes the district had planned for that acknowledgement, and how it would impact our students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Our next caller is Tatiana Montu.
Ms. Montu?
Hi, this is Tatiana Montia. My address is 12139 Subwoods Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32824. And I'm coming to you as an alum and employee of Orange County Public Schools to speak on the matter of dress code. Our mission at OCPS is to ensure every student has promising and successful futures. But with this current dress code, how are we to ensure and promise this successful future if students are constantly being reprimanded and pulled out of class for simply wearing a certain type of clothing? Many of these students have made points that not all students have the same type of body, that not all students have the ability to wear certain items. And so I urge you, as a board, to take that into account, because the focus should not be on what a student is wearing. And if that is such an issue, then maybe we need to take a step back and wonder, why is it that we are sexualizing the female body at such a young age? And take that and educate our students, and not make our female students feel that they are nothing but an object to society. With that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Do we have any further callers? All right. Then let me recognize board members, beginning with Member Byrd, and Member Cobert. Member Byrd, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I swear these kids could rule the world. Were those speakers wonderful, or what?
And they will, very soon.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
They were amazing, and the young men standing up advocating for the young women. Ah, love it. While I agree with them, and I do still think that, you know, there are items that we need to, I still think that there's two items on there that we need to look at, but we'll work with that next year. But I still cannot begin to express how proud I am of this board for this brave decision it has made by instilling a gender-neutral language and finally removing language that has allowed this dress code to be used against our female students so frequently. The positive input I've received over these changes that we're proposing on social media and through email has been overwhelming, and at times, very moving. As women have reminded me, this is about so much more than shoulder straps and leggings. This is about standing up for a generation of female students and telling them that their bodies are not something they should be ashamed of. We are sending the message that the bad behaviors or actions of others are not their fault based on what they wear. We are freeing up teachers to teach and students to learn, and this is a legacy that this all-female board has created, if we approve this tonight, and I'm honored to be a part of it. So Madam Chair, when it comes time, I would like to move to approve the changes to the code of conduct.
All right, why don't we go ahead and take that in the form of a motion then? A motion from Member Byrd to move the approval, and we have a second from Member Cobert. Member Cobert, you're also recognized.
Thank you. Is this not truly the next greatest generation? To see those young people standing here in this room, appropriately dressed for the occasion, I might add, and to see those young men advocating for those young women has just truly moved me tonight. And it gives me every bit of confidence in these young people, in this next generation. And I'm very proud of this board as well for taking this up. I'm especially proud of Member Byrd for bringing this to us. It's not something that I had really considered before, and as we spoke and debated about it, I realized just how important this is to our young women, and I commend you for bringing this to us. We have gotten response from across the state and across the nation, saying it's about time. I had a conversation with my 13-year-old daughter and my 22- and 28-year-old sons today, and they said that they are all very proud of what we're doing here tonight. And my 13-year-old daughter said, "That's Mrs. Byrd, isn't it?" I said, "Yes, that's Mrs. Byrd." And I firmly believe that our time as educators is better spent educating students rather than dress-shaming girls. And it is just, it's just time. That time should be spent teaching all students to respect each other. So I am absolutely in favor of this policy change, and thank you for the time, Chair.
Thank you. So we have Member Lopez, I'm not sure whether, Member Lopez might be before me, she's used our regular system, so we'll recognize Member, I'll go to Member Gallo, then Member Lopez. Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo what Member Byrd and Member Cobert said about the young speakers tonight. They were fabulous. They were so well-spoken, and they stated, I think, so eloquently how we all feel about the dress code. And I did enjoy and love seeing the young men support young women, that truly does, it's just really good to see. I just want to speak in favor of this. I think this is a great change to our dress codes or our code of conduct. I too have received emails in support from all over the county, and I'm just proud to be part of this board, and I look forward to voting in the affirmative for this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let me recognize Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel very proud of all the students, especially about the boys, you know, representing the women's boys, so I feel very, very proud of that. And, you know, I agree with school board member Cobert when she say, "And they were very appropriately dressed," advocating for something that is very fair. And I agree with them, sexual harassment are not okay, and, you know, just saying that the attire is revealing, and try to modify the way we dress, because we don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable, that's kind of, it's not the type of message that we want to communicate. But I have questions on the dress code, because they made me think about that. So they were talking about consequences for certain type of attire. Did we make that changes on the dress code about the consequences? Because just in case, I want to be, you know, to make sure that we do not have any type of consequences because of the attire on the, on all of them, boys and girls. I think that this policy is based, you know, the dress code is a gender-neutral decision.
Let me take that off so you can hear me. Sorry about that. So we actually followed State Statute 1006.07 and the recommended consequences for dress code violations. So within the code, it does list that a first offense will be a verbal warning and a call to the parent. A second offense requires a student is ineligible to participate in extracurricular activity for a period of time not to exceed five days, and the school principal shall meet with the student's parent or guardian. And a third or subsequent offense, the student shall receive in-school suspension for a period not to exceed three days, and the student is ineligible to participate in extracurricular activities for a period not to exceed 30 days. The school principal shall call the student's parent or guardian, and send the parent or guardian a written letter regarding the student's suspension, which is something that we do for all suspensions, anyway. But that came directly out of Section 1006.07, subsection 2D, Florida statutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. So I wanted to... I just... I've been up here just kind of gloating at our kids and our young people, the same as you all have, and I really... I say this all the time, but I'm really optimistic. And I'm only optimistic because I see the energy and the passion, the intellect. And like you all, I mean, seeing these young women explain it from their perspective was very important for me to hear and understand. But seeing these young men take that position for our young women is a different world than I grew up in. So it's exciting to see what the future holds. It really is. And I will tell you right now, I am glad I am on my way out because I would not want to run against any of them. If any of them were running against me, I think I would just fold because their speeches were incredible. So I do have one thing that I do just want to share with the board. I am a very literal person. I've learned this about myself. When I... When somebody says something, when I read something, I take the words very literally. And so I have one, and I'm not... I'm going to support this, but I think that we will be revisiting our Code of Conduct during the year, and we might want to just further clarify this one sentence, but I don't want anybody to be confused about what the board intended. So we do have a statement in here that says that tops must have straps. And when I read that, it occurred to me that most of my tops do not have straps. That's not a strap. So I know what we meant. We meant it couldn't be strapless. But a T-shirt technically doesn't have a strap. So I just wanted to share kind of publicly that the intent of the board was not to say that every T-shirt must be accompanied with a strap, but it must have, at a minimum, a strap. And I know that's what we were all thinking, but I just wanted to get that into the record. I talked to Ms. Enval. I think I will probably be the only person on the planet who would ever read that sentence and ever question that. And I'm sure that no principal or teacher is going to take anybody down to the principal's office because they had a T-shirt on instead of a top with straps. But still, just had to get it off my chest. So with that, I think we have... Unless we have any other speakers from board members, we are poised for a vote, so let me go ahead and call the question. We'll begin with Member Gallo.
Aye.
Thank you. Let me get my order back here. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon? Dr. Gordon? I'll come back.
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon? I'm voting in the affirmative. Dr. Gordon? Okay. I know we will get Dr. Gordon back on the call, and we will confirm her vote before we end this evening. Member Byrd, I just also want to congratulate you and commend you for your leadership on this issue. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I know, and I don't know what I can do. Dr. Gordon, can you at least text her and see if that might work? One more time. Dr. Gordon, if you could hear me? We'll move on. And are you okay procedurally if I come back to register her vote?
Yes. I know she's still on the call because I just checked with her.
Yes, okay. Thank you. All right. Dr. Jenkins?
Madam Chair, the next policy up is Policy IKFB, Graduation Exercises.
Thank you. Is that you, Mr. Palmarene?
That is.
Thank you, Mr. Palmarene.
Good evening, members of the board. We obviously went over this in Rural Development Workshop and in work sessions. This has come back multiple times.
Dr. Gordon? I'm so sorry, Mr. Palmarene. Member Gordon? We were just taking a vote on Policy JIC. We had a motion from Member Byrd, a second from Member Cobert, and I was doing roll call. Are you in favor?
I think I heard she left the meeting.
Oh, it was good music, though. Okay. Back to you, Mr. Palmarene.
Thank you, members of the board. This policy, we revised in multiple different ways. We defined what graduation was. We defined that the high school office would give out guidelines with respect to graduation ceremonies, and we'd publish them on school websites. We said while middle schools and elementary schools can have ceremonies recognizing as accomplishments of their students, graduations are defined to include only high schools and others' programs which students receive the equivalent of high school diplomas.
In the meeting, I haven't left... I haven't left anything.
Has joined the meeting.
Dr. Gordon?
While middle schools and elementary schools can have ceremonies recognizing as accomplishments of their students...
Dr. Gordon, we have a motion on the table by Member Byrd, seconded by Member Cobert, for... To adopt the Policy JIC, and I did a roll call. Are you in favor?
Yes, okay. I'm in favor of it. Go ahead. I'm looking at John.
All right, thank you. All right, and we'll go back to John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, we added in the provision about students being allowed to wear military dress uniforms if they're in the reserves. That was a change made out of statute coming from Hillsborough County. And then we also revised the standards with respect to student speeches at graduation ceremonies. Employees of the board will not be able to prohibit student... The content of student graduation speeches except for very certain areas. Religious expression in a graduation speech cannot be taken out. Speakers at the graduation ceremony will be selected upon neutral criteria, which is, you know, class president or, you know, SGA president, valedictorian, salutatorian. Valedictorian and salutatorian are going to be defined in your student progression plan as to how those are selected. Students, again, may not engage in obscene, vulgar, offensively lewd or indecent speech. The student's speech at the graduation doesn't reflect the board's endorsement. We actually have to put that language on the programs under the state statute. And with respect to any changes made to speeches, that will have to come to the Office of Legal Services for review so we can ensure that we're not violating the student's First Amendment right with respect to their speech. And we added one last caveat after the last time, which was, to the extent we are going to have graduation speeches, they all have to be given in one format, i.e., they're all going to be done live or they're all going to be done via video. So those are the summary of the changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. No questions from board members at this time. Great description, great summary, and great job. And I think we have no callers on the line. Yeah, we can do this. Thank you. No callers on the line, no members of the public present. Board members, is there a motion? Motion by Member Lopez to support policy... IKFB. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is that okay? Okay. So we have a motion by Member Lopez, a second. I believe that was Vice Chair Gould?
Yes.
Is that correct? All right. Let me do roll call vote then. We have Member Gallo. Are you still with us, Member Gallo?
Yes, Madam Chair, aye.
Okay. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Member... Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
Aye.
Dr. Castredal?
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
And likewise, I vote in the affirmative. It's unanimous. Very good. Thank you. So, Dr. Jenkins, we are back to you.
I can jump in. We have three more policies. We have the revised board policies for leave. There's one for instructional staff. That's GCCAB. GCCBB is for administrative staff, and GDCB is for instructional staff. It's the same change, and I'll let Mr. Palmarene go ahead and tell you what that change is. And if we could take them all separately, that'd probably be easier.
Thank you, Mr. Palmarene.
And thank you again, members of the board. This is the discretionary emergency leave policy for administrators, instructional staff, and classified staff. All three policies are going to read identically, and all of them just make one minor change. It says, "When schools or other school board of Orange County, Florida facilities are closed," and then we added language to say, "Or when an OCPS employee is prevented or not allowed to report to their work site at the order of the superintendent due to a national natural disaster or other catastrophe, discretionary emergency leave with or without pay may be granted by the superintendent to those various classes of employees." That, as I described to you previously, we sometimes have facilities that have been closed down due to law enforcement activities in the area where people are prevented from getting there. This would cover that. And it was also, given the situation that we currently in with respect to various leaves, we want to make sure we have all of the available avenues to approve leave to the extent we need to do so, and this would help clear that up, the superintendent's authority. So we are here to ask for your support on those three, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Enval?
One more thing. I don't believe that we have any... I know we don't have any callers on the line, and I don't believe we have any public that has chosen to speak, so it would be appropriate, in the interest of time...
To take all three.
To take all three at once.
I completely agree. Any members of the public? Last call. Any members of the public on 303, 304, or 305? All right, seeing none, the... All three are available for a joint motion. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you. Motion from Member Lopez. Is there a second? Member Byrd, seconded. So we are on a motion to approve. Again, it's 304, 305... I'm sorry. 303, 304, and 305. Let me do a quick roll call vote. Ms. Gallo? Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
Aye.
Dr. Castredal?
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
Likewise, I vote in the affirmative. The motion castes unanimously. Great job, John. Moving on to our approval of consent agenda. Is there a motion for... We have, again, no members of the public wishing to speak on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Member Cobert. Motion by Member Cobert. Is there a second? Second by Member Lopez. I'm sorry, Member Gallo? Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Member Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
Aye.
Dr. Castredal?
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
And I likewise vote in the affirmative. Passed unanimously. We are on non-consent 1701. Request approval of the recommendation for the renewal of the charter school contract with Renaissance Charter School at Goldenrod. And Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, we actually had this come before the board in some previous meetings. We have actually gone through mediation. I'm going to ask our director, our associate superintendent for school choice to intro it, and then we will have Associate Counsel Palmarene give you the legal background regarding this approval.
Good evening, Madam Chair. School board members, superintendent, thank you. Before you this evening, we have a five-year charter contract renewal for Renaissance at Goldenrod. You'll recall on March 10th, an agenda item was placed on the Orange County School Board agenda for action to renew Renaissance at Goldenrod charter for 15 years. It was determined that the board members needed further information in order to make a determination regarding whether to renew the charter contract. At a special meeting... Board meeting on March 24th, 2020, the school representatives provided the requested information to school board members for review. Additionally, school board members were informed that a whistleblower allegation had been received within the past few days by the Office of Legal Services. The board voted that evening that the school would receive a one-year extension of the charter contract pending the investigation into the whistleblower complaints by the district prior to considering renewal. The school accepted the one-year extension and requested mediation with the Florida Department of Education. Subsequent to the March 24th, 2020, special school board meeting, the Office of School Choice Services investigated the whistleblower allegations received by the Office of Legal Services and determined that the whistleblower allegations could not be substantiated. Mediation, as required by Florida statute, took place on May 28th, 2020, at which time the charter school's legal representative was made aware that there was insufficient evidence to substantiate the whistleblower complaints. Completion of the mediation resulted in the school requesting a five-year charter renewal. Superintendent?
Dr. Jenkins?
And also now like to have Associate Counsel Palmarene give us the summary from the mediation.
So we went through mediation. Obviously, what came out of it was a negotiated agreement that we would present this to the board. And when we... And I just want to remind the board, when we had the initial... Or actually, the second meeting on this on March 24th, and when this board approved the one-year contract, it was subject so the whistleblower allegations could be investigated. And that was the basis upon which we deviated from what we would normally have to do under Florida law. So if you look at the Florida Administrative Code Rule, it is 6A-6.0786, subsection 4. It is the model renewal contract. And the model renewal contract says the renewal has to be for five up to 15 years. So absent having any allegations from the whistleblower complaint that were active at that point, and remember, the allegations that were made were of the nature of, one, they were not withdrawing students in a timely fashion in order to keep the FTE even though the students had been withdrawn, and, two, they were not withdrawing teachers from the roster even though those teachers had left, leaving the impression that they were complying with class size on a school-wide average. Those were allegations that, if true, would have been violations of law and would have given us the ability to terminate their contract. Having said that, we went through the whistleblower allegations. We were not able to substantiate any of that. So from this point, when we went through mediation, we didn't have a legal basis to give them anything less than a five-year contract. So that's why we're here. We're here to give them the five-year contract that they would be entitled to under the law. And at this point, I can't say that there's any basis that we should not be... Legal basis anyways, not to be not able to approve that. I think we would run the risk of having an adverse finding in any subsequent litigation if we did something other than approve the five-year contract. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that if you... That you have.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any... I'm sorry. We may. Member Castredal, up next. We have Dr. Castredal, and then Dr. Gordon. And Mr. Palmarene, you may... We may be calling on you, so stay close. Dr. Castredal, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Palmarene, for that review. I also remember during the... When the school came before the board, there was a revelation, so to speak, about the high number of permanent substitutes that are used to teach classes. And there were questions about their qualifications as they compare to a regular certified classroom teacher. And that still resonates with me. I find that hard to kind of tackle with. Another concern that I have still is I remain concerned about their commitment to transparency regarding the teacher qualifications as far as what they communicate to parents and to the public. So I'm not comfortable supporting this renewal, so I will not be voting in favor. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Castredal. Let's go to Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you very well.
I would like to thank Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Woody and Attorney John Palmarene and the staff for working extremely hard. My heart is heavy. My heart is... I want to curse. It's really broken. I feel that our system is broken in the whistleblower department. These people do not know us. They trust us and put their life on the line when they call us. They trust us and put their life on the line when they call us and share with us. And when we are not professional enough to take into confidence what a whistleblower is telling us, I'm sick over this. I'm terribly sick over this. I do not believe that these parents, these people would call when they know everything is going right. These are not detrimental things that they have shared with us. And for our department not to find anything when I know that some of these things that they are talking about is true, that people are scared to death of our whistleblower department. They're scared to death. I have shared with the superintendent several reasons why they are scared. I've shared with general counsel. I really feel bad. I wish that we would get rid of approving charter schools and let the whistleblowers turn it into the state and let the state do what they have to do. Because we don't really have the time to look into every aspect that these whistleblowers are giving up their life for. Run the risk hell. These children are running the risk. We are putting these children in the hands of uncertified people that are not looking up for anything but putting numbers in a school. These cannot all be lies. They're just not proven by our staff, for whatever reason. And I'm here to say, when somebody is threatened, when their jobs are threatened, I'm just going to tell you, they went back and laughed at this board. They literally laughed at us. You all don't even know it. But they were scared to send you the tape. They were scared to send you the paperwork, but they sent it. Being with that, I'm mad as hell tonight. I really am. And I've never done it like this before. But there's no way in the world, we are violating a law approving this school when they know that they have violated. They went back and laughed at us. They even laughed because I requested about salaries and I requested, oh, they tried to laugh. They laughed it off. I feel, I want those people that gave their life to this board to try to let us know what was going on in that charter school. And we couldn't investigate enough. We probably just investigated the best we could, but our whistleblower department needs to be revamped or either get rid of it and let all charter whistleblowers go to the state. Because it is not fair for these people to have sleepless nights, heart attacks, high blood pressure, worrying about that those children are not being treated correctly in those schools, and these people are making hundreds of thousands of dollars off of our children. And then when they don't make it, what happens to those kids? They come back into our schools, back into our communities, and as parents stated earlier, they're behind in reading. I know because it happened in my district more than once. But this board approved it? Not this board, I'm sorry, not the present board. But Palmabose, oh, I loved the school. I went over there and I visited and they were doing so good. I don't visit. I very seldom visit. And if I visit, I'm visiting for a reason. I'm not dancing over charter schools. The ones that we had that had been the best, they haven't caused us any trouble since I've been on this board. And I am the senior board member. And I've been on this board, and I, and if I call the names, they have not given us not one lick of trouble. They have never had not one whistleblower. And I'm going to call the names of those charter schools before I leave this board in November. Because people need to know who our good charter schools are and have never, ever had any complaints on them because those parents work hard for those kids, they work for the school, and it's not about the almighty dollar and directors and running around laughing at this school board. And if any of you are interested, I would be glad to, because, let you hear it, because the voting is over. But you go ahead and vote it in. But I will not. I will not vote it in. Because I know that those people were not lying to me, and they were not lying when they sent additional papers in. I cannot, I cannot, I cannot hold them faultless for that. I cannot hold them faultless for that. They were doing their best. And people's jobs are put on the line, and then we're going through a pandemic, and they're trying to tell this board what's going on. And that they're so wonderful. No, they're not that wonderful. Because people would not just sit up and lie like that when we know some of the things that they are telling are true, because they laughed at us. They laughed. So with that in mind, Madam Chair, I am voting against this charter.
All right, thank you. Ms. Embel? Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if there was anybody else. Member Byrd?
No, Castredal first.
I'm sorry? We had Member Castredal. And then we had Member Gordon. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be short. I apologize, I sound short.
Oh, she already went, sorry.
Yeah, we did have Member Castredal. Member Byrd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Palmarene, can you explain a little further the investigation process that took place for the whistleblower complaints?
Yeah, so what happened is, is we got, I think it was three separate whistleblower complaints. The first was a packet of information that you all received that went to test scores. And quite frankly, on that one, looking at it, it was interim data leading up to, up to the final test. But, quite frankly, with respect to their performance, their performance has been graded by the state of Florida. It is the final grade that they received from the state of Florida as far as their academic performance, and I believe they had a C grade, which is not sufficient to put them into any academic emergency or any, where they have to come up and have a plan that is going to show improvement, where they would have to come before this board and say, here's our plan for improvement. With respect to the second investigation, Dr. Scott from School Choice conducted it, but, and I'll let her come up here to explain exactly what she did, but she went through the documentation that we had in our student management system about when students were, you know, withdrawn from the school. And she went and looked at all of that data and to see whether or not kids were being withdrawn right after the FTE window, and she didn't in fact find that. So I'm going to let her describe more of what she did there, because she's the one who investigated it, I did not. But that's the basic information that she went through, and I'll let her explain further.
Member Byrd, thank you for the question.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Jenkins, upon us receiving the whistleblower complaints the day after the board meeting, which was March 25th, we received actually two written sets of complaints. The first complaint had eight items on it, the second had four. Between those 12, some of them were grouped, so we grouped them into four major categories. First category would talk about enrollment. And the accusation was that 30 to 40 students were held on the roster after FTE and were not, and they were removed afterwards. What we have found in using student enrollment data, we've used bi-weekly student enrollment counts as well as state reporting documentation, it did show that 34, excuse me, 35 students were withdrawn between survey two, the day after survey two, in January. Out of those 35, what we have found is 12 of those students were siblings. And I actually have a breakdown of where those students went and when they left. I provided that to you in the packet, the dates of when the students were actually withdrawn, but a number either left the county, returned to Puerto Rico, left the state, three students left to attend their sister schools in Osceola County. We had one home education student and two students who went to a Christian academy, eight students who returned back to the school district. So using state reporting data as well as student enrollment data, we found that there was no purging of students directly after survey two. Like I said, those 35 were removed prior, the week before survey two, as up until January of 2020. The second concern was that there was no, they were not following class size. We also contacted our state reporting department for that. We were given a number of 1217 that was reported for FTE. There was no documentation from the state DOE department to say that the school was out of class size. Neither did our state reporting department identify that school of being out of class size. In the report that I've sent to you, it broke down each number, K3, 4, 5, you know, for the different grade configurations, and they didn't meet those numbers within. The third accusation dealt with the school not addressing discipline. Discipline data is entered into our Skyward system. What we found is 52 entries in our discipline system from the school, and that came from our actual discipline office. We did contact them, we didn't search for it ourselves, we asked, and the report was pulled from Skyward, from our discipline office, excuse me. And the last did talk about teachers being held on the roster. We did not have any names. We could not tell who has come and gone because in SAPR system, once you're removed, we don't know you're there anymore, you don't show up on a roster. So we didn't have any documentation to even search for that data. So we left that one as unconfirmed, and the other three as not substantiated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. So, Member Lopez?
And the four complaints, are the four complaints are another one or are the same one?
They were 12 in total, and we grouped them into four. I can read them if you want me to. I can redraw 12?
Yes, sure.
First one, the school manipulated student enrollment in the number of teachers employed. Second, withdrawn students were included in the FTE counts, then officially withdrawn after reporting period. Third, administration directed the enrollment manipulation, which consisted of approximately 30 to 40 students per survey period. Fourth, administration's position was not to worry about class size. Focus was entirely enrollment, getting the student numbers up and keeping them up. Fifth, no student discipline because the school does not want to lose students. Number six, teachers would resign, but their names were kept in the school system to show the school was fully staffed. Number seven, kindergarten classrooms with 34 students each. Number eight, complainant was put into the classroom as a substitute despite having no teaching experience when the need arose. Number nine, the school cannot keep teachers either because they quit or because they are fired. Number 10, these teachers are maintained in the system to inflate the numbers of full-time teachers. Number 11, a kindergarten teacher resigned due to a class of 34 students. And the 12, FTE counts are manipulated and inflated. Administration expressly requires that withdrawn students be included in the count. Employees are told to hold off from withdrawing students who have already left the school until FTE period ends.
So on the, from eight through 11, so do we have any type of proof on that or not?
Within the packet, we did not find proof that they were confirmed. We found proof of the, of the opposite.
Of the opposite, okay, thank you.
All right. Member Gallo. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question in reference to the teacher certificate. It was stated that we couldn't confirm it because the names were wiped out of our system. Is that something that, if the board approves this charter, denies, that we will be monitoring moving forward?
Ms. Scott?
Because of this situation, what we have done, we normally collect rosters for charter schools. It's not a requirement by state because they are independent employers. However, we will be collecting monthly charter school staff rosters, and it will show us who was certified, who was out of field, and when they are terminated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Lopez? Member Lopez was, I mean, I'm sorry, Member Gallo, was that, was that the only question?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Absolutely. Member Gould?
Thank you. Could Mr. Palmarene refresh us on what the process is for Renaissance if this board denies them this evening?
Yes, thank you, Member Gould. What will happen is, at this point, if the board denies them, they will file a complaint.
Has joined the meeting.
I think that's just when I get up for some reason.
I know, I know, John.
So what will happen, Member Gould, is if we, if the board were to deny it tonight, they would file an administrative complaint, and we would have a hearing before the Division of Administrative Hearings, hearing officer would be appointed, and we would have to establish, we would have a hearing with witnesses and evidence that we would go through. And the, since we are giving a contract at this point, which is less than the five years which the rule would require, we would have to prove that we had evidence by which we could prove that the school was in material violation of the law or its charter contract. If we were to be unable to prove that by a preponderance of evidence, we would lose the case. The Division of Administrative Hearing Officer would issue a final order. It used to be that the order would come back to the school board for them to consider it. That is not the case anymore. The Division of Administrative Hearings would issue a final order. And if we were to not prevail, the prevailing party gets awarded its attorney's fees. So we would be on the hook for paying Renaissance's attorney's fees if we were to take this to an administrative hearing and lose. So that would be the process that would go, that we would go through, Member Gould.
And just to clarify, from the synopsis that we just received, we do not have substantial evidence to back up the whistleblower's claim.
Based upon the evidence that was gathered by Dr. Scott and her team, in my opinion, we would not have the evidence necessary to meet our burden of proof if we were to go forth and challenge this case.
Thank you. Those are my only questions.
Okay. Member Lopez? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm seeing you here, so you're there. Okay, thank you. Let me, let me add to this conversation for a minute. So I understand the feeling of board members that are concerned about accountability in charter schools. And I understand what, I understand the concerns that we may have information presented to us that perhaps, perhaps it is valid, but there is not enough evidence, enough, anything to verify that. We have to act on the actual data that we have. And we cannot, we can, but we don't have the authority to place ourselves in the role of legislators who set down the foundation for how charter schools operate and how we interact with them. And as, regardless of what emotions any of us might have on this topic, we have a duty to act according to the laws as they exist, regardless of how we individually may or may not feel. So based on that, I believe that we have an obligation at this point to approve this charter, or at least take action on this. And I know this is a difficult issue for the board. I will be pleased, I don't normally do it, but I would be pleased to offer a motion that we move the recommended action. And, pardon me? You can, you can speak before I say that. I'm just, I'm just wanting the board to know where I'm coming from. I think we need to do this. I understand everybody may not be able to support it. I respect that. This is not, this is just simply a matter of what I think we are required to do. It's not a personal issue, and I, and I want board members to feel comfortable voting their conscience, but also understanding. And I think, Member, Vice Chair Gould, I very much appreciate your question, because I think it's important for us to understand the ramification of voting this down and making a principled stand that has a cost associated with it. So, Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with you. I, I believe that, and you know that I voted, voted against charter school before. I'm not a big fan of charter schools, but I want to be fair. And at this point, we don't have any evidence. From what I saw and I heard from Mr. Palmarene, you know, they, they made the investigation and they did not find any evidence. So at the beginning, you know, I, I recommended with my school board members to bring them back and, you know, and make the investigation, and I agree on that. back and, you know, and make the investigation and I agree on that. Anyways, we are not renewing, you know, we are not, we are not in favor of renewing for 15 years. At this point, it's only for five years. And our department is saying that they're gonna be collecting monthly information and, you know, I have to be fair and I agree with you and I support your motion.
And I likewise, I'm not a big fan. I think that there is a role and a place for charter schools. I think in my, my world, if I were in the legislature and had the power to make something different, I would change a lot of the accountability and I would probably narrow the role. But I'm not and I'm here. So let me recognize Dr. Gordon.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I, I love you all dearly and God bless each one of you. I love you dearly. But I'm going to have to say this. And I have to say it until you feel it and you should feel it by being on the county commission for 16 years. You should know how I feel. I got four more years on you there. I'm 20 years, okay? And, and I'm here to tell you this. We have an excellent, an excellent, okay? Process for getting the schools endorsed. My concern is people are busy. You, we are going to lose the trust. And I've spoken to the superintendent about this and I don't want to say it over the air. Do not say this over the air. I've spoken to general counsel about this. There are accusations that people are saying, why should I call in? So either you want them to call in or you don't want them to call in. People are not going to call in to be vindictive. People call in because they see that children are hurting. 12 referrals and not even counting the ones that came in, okay? Others came in that I didn't even look at. I just said, Dr. Jenkins, what do I do with this? Because I guess people know that I'm going to fight for children. I don't think people are going to just sit home and write up and say, oh, the school is manipulating the funds, the school is withdrawing people, the school is, this is a hell of a lot of things going against this. And nobody's out there, I don't want to embarrass our staff and say, how many times did you go out there? But I would like to know, did they talk to any teachers? Did they talk to the custodian? I mean, but I don't, I don't want even know right now. Okay? Because I asked a couple of times and we're going in, we're not the doctors of this. We don't want to legislate any charter schools. I would like to see charter schools taken out of public schools. Because that's, because some of them could do without it. But some of them are excellent, like I said. Never heard anything bad about them. The majority of our charter schools heard nothing. The others that got into trouble, they self-destruct. They just, they just self-destruct. And I'm telling you, when you, when you, when you got so many things, people are hurting. I want to stay to date. That's why people don't want to do any whistleblowers. I do whistleblowers, but I told Dr. Jenkins, I'm through whistleblowing. I am. Because you know what? Nobody want to believe the whistleblowers. I don't think anybody is sitting home making up lies about what's happening to children. And all those parents that called in tonight about how they feel that their child can't read and what's happening here and there, that's detrimental to me. I'm a librarian. I teach children how to read and enjoy reading and read for enjoyment. But to have these many accusations, how many times, I don't want to embarrass our staff and say, well, how many times did you go in? Who did you talk to? How many staff members did you talk to? The answers I got was not sufficient. I'm just being honest. I'm being honest. I'm gonna let my vote stand. We paid for more than illegal. We paid for a whole lot more other things. I'm for the children. I'm for the children and they want to fight it. Why didn't they fight us for 15 years and they're so great? Why didn't they fight us for 15? They weren't titled 15. Why did they settle for five? Because they'll probably be away, they'll be out of the way, they'll move on. I'm looking out for the children. I, my, my vote on this has got to be for the children. I do not think, I don't like the way we handle the whistleblowers. I'm just being honest with you. And people are not going to be telling us nothing. And you don't know how successful this board has been because we had whistleblowers. But when we scare the whistleblowers and we say, oh, you don't have to do that. No, don't worry about it. It ain't no big deal. That's not what the whistleblowers do. And I'm not saying that that's what, I know Attorney Pomerini and his department did not do that. But there are some other people that have done that. And I'm letting it out because it scares me that we ask for whistleblowers. I've asked for a process from this board, an updated process. I haven't seen it yet on my desk. So you know what? If you never get another whistleblower, you know, maybe we, maybe we deserve it, but I hope that you don't sit on it. Because you're the ones that's going to be facing and you're going to be sitting up there approving things that you know nothing about. Never been in the school, never talked to any of the teachers, don't know what's going on, not following up in your district. But I jump into everybody's district if it deals with kids and I see unfairness. And this is one school that I just felt that there was unfairness because I had an opportunity to get involved and I didn't want to get involved. So I immediately passed everything over and the superintendent passed it over. I'm so sorry. But all you need is one thing, one. All you have to do is have one. That's how easy it is. So it's not a difficult thing. I just can't believe that these people just constantly lie. There weren't just one or two or three. There were, there were four or five. They got scared after they were told on the phone, just, just forget about this call. Let it go, they're charter schools, let them have it. The state's going to give it to them anyhow. That they're gonna fight us. We're gonna have to pay for the lawyer and the attorney. Well, we paid for more than that. I'm, I'm just for the children. I'm sorry. You all vote the way you want. I'm gonna vote the way I want. And my vote still stands that I cannot vote knowing the things that I know. I would hate to think that they lied to me. And if I have to go to court, that, if, if that would have been taken, I don't think they want that. I don't believe they want that. And if they do, then they can find out who's telling the truth. Because this, this is just unbelievable. I've never seen this much stuff come before us. And then they take five years and could have gone with 15. That bothers me. So they shouldn't have taken one and tried to straighten up their stuff and get it out of the way like some of the others did. But I'm, I'm, I'm hurt. I'm hurt. But I would like to know, did they interview any teachers, our staff, the custodian in the school that had to move in the 34 chairs in kindergarten? Did they talk with the custodian? Madam Chair, I would like to know that. And the teachers in the school.
Mr. Pomerini? I'm gonna ask that at the next meeting, we have a timer that is visible on the screen because I think it is important for everybody to have an idea of how long time is going. Mr. Pomerini, can you answer the question whether anybody checked the furniture to see if there were 34 desks in the room?
You talk after every, I'm not being rude tonight, but yes, I am. You talk after every speaker. I got it written in my notes. Please don't do that. Madam Chair, run your meeting. Don't anger me. Please don't do that. I'm already angry.
Mr. Pomerini?
Since I'm not the one who conducted the investigation, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Scott.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Pomerini, you seemed to be getting up, so I thought perhaps you wanted to field that question. Dr. Scott, do you know?
At the time of the whistleblower complaint, we were under COVID-19. However, I will tell you this, the, our protocol in school choice is to visit schools at least twice a year. We visit first day of school. We have been there two to three times afterwards. And I will tell you, the way the school is set up, the kindergarten classrooms, I have never witnessed 34 desks in a classroom. They have abided by class size since they've been open. So I could not verify that there were 34 students in a classroom.
Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Gordon? Okay. So I offered to make a motion. I did not have a second. All right, thank you. Motion to approve the staff's recommendation for the five-year renewal and seconded by Member Lopez. I do just want to clarify that I believe that every member of this board puts our children first. And I do believe that we can disagree on what our legal responsibility is without personally attacking each other's integrity. With that, let me call the question. Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye, with concern.
Dr. Gordon? Dr. Castredal?
Nay.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
I'm not voting for this charter.
I'll take that as a vote no. And I will vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. All right. If we can move on to 1702. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the resolution required by the board to look into our representatives for FSBA legislative representative and the alternate. I have spoken with board members who are currently serving in those roles, who are willing to agree to continue in those roles.
All right, thank you. So we need a motion to continue with the representation we have. Member Castredal, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to make the motion to continue with Member Cobert and Member Gallo as our FSBA representative.
Thank you, Dr. Castredal. Is there, do we need a second? Is there a second? Second by? Second by Member Gordon, I believe?
No, I didn't second anything.
Member Lopez seconded. All right. Member Gallo, in favor?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
Aye.
Dr. Castredal?
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
And I likewise vote in favor. Dr. Jenkins, 1703.
Want to thank staff who have worked diligently and certainly made use of the chairman's expertise as well. This is the declaration, the white paper that the board asked for regarding school overcrowding and House Bill 7103. I, I think it is well worded, certainly up for discussion at this point. I'd ask General Counsel to also add comments to the document. It is, it is, what we, what we had previously was a lengthy PowerPoint presentation that could serve as a tutorial. This would be a condensed version. Anyone who is curious about the history behind why we are so concerned about 7103 and the entire history of the entire, of the district in Orange County regarding school overcrowding is capsulized in a single document. We think it will serve as an excellent resource and a statement to the community, a declaration, if you will, of where this board stands regarding school overcrowding.
To the extent it's helpful, we have also communicated all this with the county and every single jurisdiction, as well as our attorneys for developers. So they have seen the declaration and also the PowerPoint presentation that was presented earlier.
Thank you. I personally think that's very helpful. So thank you for taking that initiative. I knew that the, that Orange County had reached out for it, but I wanted to commend you for taking the initiative to get it into the hands of as many stakeholders as, as possible. Any further, any discussion by board members? If not, is there a motion?
Member Gould would like to.
I'm sorry. Member Gould?
Yes, I, I would like to thank the staff for being so proactive with this. I think it's very important in order to help keeping this initiative moving. We know that the ball is not in, in our court totally and in fact, other stuff has to happen. I think this really helps to clarify and also have people understand how we got here and then how we can maybe move it forward. So thank you for all of the staff's efforts in this and I hope it can speed things along and I'm happy to push this motion forward.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion? Was that a motion? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Gould, was that a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. All right, we have a motion from Vice Chair Gould and seconded by Member Cobert. Before we vote on it, let me say that I think Orange County Public Schools, Orange County Government, our cities have had the most unique and proactive relationship in the state consistently now for 25 years. And we've also had the highest amount of growth. And only because of the relationship that we have had and the relationship that we have worked with the development community as well, have we been able to get sales tax funding approved to be able to continue to improve our schools, all of our schools. So this is not a deter, a different direction. We're heading in that same direction. We will continue to be working together. I think providing more information and more detailed information is going to be very helpful to the cities and the counties as they make the decisions that, that they are empowered to make. And I continue to expect us to all be partners in this community moving forward. So I'm proud of the board for the hard work that they've done throughout the last year grappling with this issue. And I will now do a roll call vote. Member Gallo?
Aye.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
Aye, approve.
Dr. Castredal?
Aye.
Member Byrd?
Aye.
And I likewise vote in the affirmative. Dr. Jenkins, anything?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Of course.
Sorry, just moving forward, seeing that the declaration is approved, I wanted to make sure we put on the record what the next steps are.
Thank you.
We are going to revise, and we already have, hoping maybe it would be approved. We revise our capacity review letters to reflect the removal of the CEA process and add a jurisdictional analysis in the letter to determine whether or not the reviewed project will be eligible for the joint approval provision of the Orange County Charter. Revised capacity determinations will also be created for all projects currently on hold for a CEA. Those letters will be sent to the project applicant, the project's jurisdictional contact, as well as any significantly affected local government as determined by our jurisdictional analysis. And there are no additional changes proposed to our capacity review process. Outside of any pre-House Bill 7103 CEAs that have been previously expired or have been terminated, all pre-HB, House Bill 7103 CEAs remain valid and are subject to the terms and conditions contained therein. This include any capital contribution payment, school site conveyance, or impact-free prepayment.
Excellent, thank you. And that was, that was helpful for us to know, next steps. All right, then, Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized for superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, just three things I'd like to speak to briefly. First, regarding reopening of schools. We have promised our community and our employees that we would keep them posted as decisions are made and as information is brought forward. Want to reassure everyone and will certainly convey the same in our Connect Orange message tomorrow, that there is nothing further to report at this time. We have the state document, a very extensive document, and we have the governor's strong recommendation and the commissioner's strong recommendation that we reopen schools in August as planned with face-to-face instruction. Strongly recommended. And then their document proceeds to give suggestions on how we might do that and things that we might need to consider. I think at this point, while we were hoping for clearer guidelines, we simply have to have a high tolerance for ambiguity. And that will tend to hopefully tamp down levels of anxiety. Here's what we will reassure our community of. Number one, that this board will take up in a work session on July 7. We've always known there are three potential buckets that ideas fall into. That is, face-to-face, the virtual learning, and blended model. So we'll talk through what the work groups have summarized in over 5,000 recommendations and ideas, I should say, ideas that came from our community. We will have time to go through summaries of that information and what all of the data and organizations and entities are providing for us. That'll be a rather lengthy work session, but it's a time for the Board to have an extensive conversation around where we might head for next year and give some direction. Starting it earlier should not be of concern because it's not a, our work sessions are not typically for public input. We have lots of public input, and they would be able to go back and, any member of the public can go back and watch the actual work session. But we think it will be extensive and take quite a bit of time. And then on July 14th is when we would actually need to come to some hopeful decision around what we will do for next year. And in that instance, there will be an opportunity for public input, further public input beyond what has been gathered thus far. And so I want to reassure the community, we are not holding anything, any information that we are aware of. I've not seen the summaries from the work groups who are trying to condense all of the ideas. In fact, they have a few more days to get their task finished because they will be in shutdown for the week of July 4th. But once we get all that information, on July 7th, we will have it prepared, hopefully get it to the Board a day ahead of time, just so you can start reviewing that list of condensed ideas, and then have that lengthier discussion on July 7th. Secondly, I want to thank Dr. Pino from the Health Department. He has been consulting with us on several issues, will certainly consult with us regarding the reopening of schools. But one exciting measure, he put us in touch with an organization called Health Heroes, and come the start of school, in the last week in September, we will be able to provide free flu shots to our students. Greatest concern from the medical community is not only that there might be a second surge, but it might be multiplied on top of the flu season. And so we're very pleased, we'll be bringing forward an MOU. Several other districts and other states as well have had similar initiatives around flu vaccines in the school setting. So pleased about that partnership. Dr. Pino is also working with us to increase our MMR, measles, mumps, rubella immunizations for our four and five-year-olds especially, where they have to have that second shot before they enter school. State of Florida, including Orange County, is very low in compliance for MMR, and there's a great concern. And so we're going to work aggressively around helping to market the necessity of those MMR vaccines and providing additional sites for clinics to have our students come in and receive their immunization. Very critical, want to keep spreading the word, anyone with four and five-year-olds to get those MMR vaccines taken care of. And then lastly, a couple of Board members had asked about what resources we were providing to teachers while they're at home this summer, that there might be some voluntary readings or some voluntary workshops that they might take part in. I want to reassure the Board and the community that we have information from the Peace and Justice Institute and another organization, Teaching Tolerance, that we are going to be providing emails to our teachers to encourage that they might use some of their summer time to review at their leisure and certainly voluntarily. And also additional opportunities to hone their skills in digital learning so that we are prepared, whatever the future might bring in Orange County and in the state of Florida regarding how we educate our students. I believe we need to be nimble, we need to be prepared and ready to pivot should we have a need to do so while we are still under this pandemic. And so we are going to send that information out. Certainly we'll copy the Board as well, useful reading and work session, workshops that individuals might attend to, just on a personal level, to better equip themselves for what we might face when school restarts. But again, I want to emphasize, no decisions have been made. I don't have answers to publicize to anyone. Our message tomorrow will reassure the community, our employees, and parents that we don't have answers, but we will keep them posted. That July 7th work session and July 14th Board meeting will be the times that we can have more information to share. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Enval?
I do not have anything to report today.
Board members?
I do have two people queued up for a Board comment, Gordon and, Dr. Gordon and Member Byrd.
Less I forget, Madam Chair, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Less I forget, I don't need a vote on it, I just need to know if any Board members would have extreme concern about starting that meeting on the 7th as early as the noon hour if possible.
I think it's brilliant.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Enval. I was looking at the 6:57, I thought. So, okay, so we have Member Gordon and Member Byrd. Member Gordon?
I'm sorry, am I up next?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to say this, and I know you said you're going to get a timer, that should have been done earlier, and not trying to put anybody down, but you did it in the middle of my speech. So I'm making my speech because that's very, that's, I'll leave it at that. I really thought that that was bad because I never argued with you all. When you started arguing about the bra strap, I didn't even interfere. I just let you all have it, and you went on and on, and I thought it was fine, and you go on, on, on and on. Everybody had their little thing that they go on and on to. So if you have norms in the meeting, as I stated before, then none of this would happen. So since we don't have any, then that's what we get. I do want to say to Dr. Jenkins that I am helping out in Osceola, and that was not a good time for me, but however, you went ahead and announced it, but I'm glad that you did take a look at it. I will do my best to maybe take a lunch break at that time. I don't know how we came up with that time, but I've been on this Board before. When we start switching times, it just breaks away and not, the public don't ever know when we're meeting. So I thought we were going, that's one thing that the Chair has been very consistent with, is our regular meetings. So that has been good, but I see we are wavering away, so I can hack it for the next couple of months, I can hack that. I do want to say, I am asking, before I leave, that the whistleblower safety procedures and safeguard be there for the public so that I can inform my community. The other, nobody else is interested in, I know the Chair said, I'm not, I'm not, listen, everybody has a vote, and Chair, you have two. So you've got three votes coming out of your district, okay? It doesn't matter how you vote. I'm talking about integrity. I'm not stopping anybody from voting. You can only vote on what you know. And I'm sure that that's what my fellow colleagues did tonight. And I say, God bless you. But I just happen to know a little bit more and a little different, okay? So I have to vote the way I want to. And to bring up about a timer in the middle of a meeting, yes, I highly recommend it. We got it there. We have a five minutes, and then we get back on the agenda. But that means that there should be no interruption after every speaker. There needs to not even be any clarification after every speaker. Our summarizing what I said, again, what anybody else said, you know, we need to set those norms on how the meeting would be run, not just the timer, but the procedure. But I'm asking, Madam Chair, that you get with the superintendent. And I need to see a whistleblower because for some reason, I, you know, I get a lot of calls. I don't know how many of you get them, but I get a lot of calls, and I get a lot of packages. Some of them I go through, some of them I don't. These particular packages I didn't go through. I didn't go through them. I immediately asked Dr. Jenkins, what should I do? And she told me where to send them. I wasn't comfortable with that. As a Board member that is elected to represent the constituents and School Board District Five and to vote for this entire Orange County School Board, I am asking that we get those whistleblowers' safety procedures and guidelines so that we can get them out to the public so that they don't feel that their jobs or lives are at stake, especially, we don't know how long we're going to be in this pandemic. Nobody want to be losing their job because people go back and say, uh-huh, see, you total it in, so now you can go find another job. So what I'm saying is, we don't, we're not protecting our whistleblowers, and I'm saying we're not protecting them because I haven't seen the latest guidelines on how this Board is going to operate. And I really need to know that, it's going to be very important to me. So, Madam Chair, I'm asking you and the superintendent, if the others are not interested, that's all well and good, but I am definitely interested that this information gets to my Board. And these whistleblowers are not in my district. Let me make that perfectly clear. So they're in your district that's sitting there. They're not in my district. Because normally, if anything comes in in my district, I go right to the superintendent and do my best to try to clear them up as quickly as I can. So I'm asking you and pleading with you because people are not going to be at home trying to get even when they, this is their livelihood. And that's what I'm asking for and hope that, this is the second or third time I'm asking, and the year's gone. The year's gone in July. So I'm going to see where you take it from there. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Okay. Uh, Member Byrd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we approved the Academy of Culinary Arts Magnet for Wakava High School. Yay! I'm so, I know.
I got you.
Sorry. I am so excited about this. They do such a fabulous job, and you all know because you've had the privilege of having their food earlier this year. Chef Christopher Bates wanted to say a few words as well, so we're going to take a look at a video from him.
What I love about culinary arts is the work environment, meeting new people, making new friends, and just, it's an amazing experience. I'm so grateful to be, and culinary arts and hospitality management is a great privilege. Thank you.
Well, it's not like it's a class. The program feels like you're actually in a restaurant cooking. It gives you a feel for how the food industry really is. I've learned so much from being in that class. I went from not being able to hold a knife to being able to fabricate a whole chicken by myself. I recommend joining because it's not about, just about cooking, it's about the experience and all the memories you make that you'll hold with you for the rest of your life.
Hi, I'm Chris Bates, the Program Director and Lead Instructor for Wakava High School's Academy of Culinary Arts. And it is a pleasure to greet you from the Wakava High School's Mustang Cafe. Now, this space used to be a classroom. It was filled with desks, and we would put tablecloths on them, and we would invite people to come and dine with us. And it was, it was nice. It served its purpose. Now, the Mustang Cafe is a fully functional restaurant dining room, complete with a cappuccino bar and all the amenities of service that you'd find at any restaurant anywhere. This space is emblematic of why Wakava High School's Academy of Culinary Arts is poised to become a magnet and why it should be. Our students do more here than just learn the standards. Of course, those are vital, and they learn the things that are required of the program, and that's incredibly important. But they do something a little bit more here. Now, Wakava High School, our students gain the skills that are necessary for success in the extraordinarily challenging hospitality industry. Right now, the hospitality industry in central Florida and across the country, across the world, has taken a blow, but they're going to bounce back. And they're going to need talented young chefs, restaurant managers, catering managers, food scientists. They're going to need that. Right now, our students are planning already for a wedding reception that we're going to be catering next March. There is a hunger amongst OCPS students for this type of education and this type of experience. And I believe that we are uniquely positioned to provide it for them. So thank you so much for your consideration. And the next time I come with my kids, we'll bring more hot sauce. Thanks.
So I guess I can end it off with saying, Wakava Culinary, I'm going to miss it. There were some hard times, there were some great times. There were some really long days. But with what I gained in experience and life experience, I would never say, I would immediately repeat it. We had an ongoing joke the last couple of weeks, or what we, what we didn't know the last couple of weeks, for the last couple of weeks of school, that we were all going to fail the grade just to do it one last time. And I'm just saying that really shows the impact that the culinary program had on students. It made students want to stay in school. It helped students get up in the morning and go have fun at school. It wasn't just extracurricular, it was a-
Lifestyle.
-program. It was a lifestyle. It changed them fundamentally, and that's one of the most important things that any program can hope to achieve. And yeah, I'm going to miss it.
So I just want to thank Chef Bates for his commitment to this program and to the students. He really is an amazing, an amazing person, amazing educator. He really does change these kids' lives. So I also want to thank Principal Michelle Erickson, who's wiping away tears in the audience right now, I know. She is, of course, leading us to retire to a life of leisure now, but she has, her dedication to this program over the past three years has, has been what has ensured this program to succeed and for the vision to become a reality now, and this magnet. And I know how excited she is to see it finally become a magnet. We've been, we've been waiting and waiting for this to happen. So Chef Bates has spent the last three years and with Michelle Erickson's help building this program, and it has inspired and challenged students who have shown a special interest in this area. As you can see from the video, he talked about the Wakava, the Wakava Cafe, which is fantastic, but he was, of course, forced out of that environment. And he went through the whole process of turning his home kitchen into like a living food network. And they actually, the news came out and did a story on it. He, he got all these like specialty cameras that filmed from the top, and he still continued to cook his classes. He tried to do like simple video teaching, and he decided that, that his students were like, this is no fun, we want to cook. And so he figured out how to teach these lessons from home, and he had been, he's been teaching those lessons from home. He's just, he's just amazing. The magnet program will provide a very unique opportunity for students to work in real-world culinary experience in an education setting where students can master these industry skills. This is what education needs to look like. It's fantastic. So congratulations to Wakava High School. Congratulations, Chef Bates, Michelle Erickson. I'm so happy for us, yay! Congratulations, Mustangs.
Congratulations, Member Byrd. All right, Member Kastredal.
Okay, well, that, that was just a wonderful celebration there. Congratulations to the Wakava High School and Member Byrd, that was great. I was just wanting to speak briefly about the upcoming meeting on July 7th that the Superintendent asked us about, and I would, I would enjoy coming in earlier on that day to, because it's probably going to be a long meeting, so if- out how to teach these lessons from home, and he's been teaching those lessons from home. He's just amazing. The magnet program will provide a very unique opportunity for students to work in real-world culinary experience in an education setting where students can master these industry skills. This is what education needs to look like. It's fantastic. So congratulations to Wakava High School. Congratulations, Chef Bates, Michelle Erickson. I'm so happy for us. Yay! Congratulations, Mustangs.
Congratulations, Member Bird. All right, Member Kesterdenel.
Okay, well, that was just a wonderful celebration there. Congratulations to the Wakava High School and Member Bird. That was great. I was just wanting to speak briefly about the upcoming meeting on July 7th that the superintendent asked us about. And I would enjoy coming in earlier on that day to, because it's probably going to be a long meeting. So if others are amenable to that, I fully support changing that date, the time for that meeting in particular. Not that we're going to make it a habit, but for this meeting in particular, I think it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kesterdenel. All right, before we close out, let me just address one thing. When I joined this board, I had never in my life been on any board where there was a time limit on board members. And I was, I'm trying to find the right word for it, a little troubled that there was a time limit, and I had to be the enforcer of my peers. And I adhered to using the time limit for a period of time. And what I found was that having a five-minute time limit, even, I mean, if you're just going to turn around and push it again for another five minutes, didn't seem like a very effective tool anyway. And that we should all be able to regulate our own time is kind of, that was probably not fair to the rest of the board, because it should have been a board decision. Before I was here, you all adopted rules. And I came in, and I didn't adhere to that rule, because I found it to be kind of disrespectful. At the same time, what I've never shared with you all, and I think you'll probably agree with this, but I know that the single greatest thing that I can take from anybody is their time. And the single greatest thing that I can give to anybody is mine. And I work very, very hard to use people's time sufficiently. And when we have our staff sitting out here last week for 40 minutes just for one conversation, I don't feel that that's valuing and respecting our employees and their time. So I have thought about it a lot in terms of what is my responsibility. And at the end of the day, my responsibility is only what you all decide. It's not, the chair doesn't get to make the rules, but you all adopted these rules. And so I had thought about it a lot since last week. And I think, and I don't want to put burden on Member Cobert, but Member Cobert has a very unique situation right now. And I felt terrible last week, because I wanted you to be home with your husband, where I felt like you needed to be. And I couldn't make that happen for you. And I have spent the whole week trying to figure out, what is my responsibility, and how can I do it better, and yet be kind and be fair to everybody's unique way of communicating, and their skill sets, and their passion. And I thought that maybe the best way was if we had a visual marker of a timer, then individually, we could know, because I sometimes am over five minutes. Like when I gave you guys a presentation, I went over five minutes. I only get it once in a year and a half, but I did. So maybe that would help, was why I thought that might help. And Dr. Gordon, I want to apologize for bringing it up when I did. I actually was concerned that we might just keep going down this path. I knew how much you didn't want to vote for that issue, and I knew it wasn't going to change where the board was going to be. And I shouldn't have brought it up at that time, and you're absolutely right. But I did think that maybe having that timer would just be a way of keeping us all calibrated. But Dr. Gordon points out that if I had adhered to these rules consistently, then we wouldn't be where we are. And if this is my fault, that so much time of yours has been taken this last year and a half, because of the way I've run the meetings, I want to apologize. And based on Dr. Gordon's recommendation, I think we go back to the rules. The rules were five minutes, end of conversation. You get a second five minutes after everybody else has spoken. That's the way the rules were adopted by this board. Not five minutes plus five minutes. Five minutes, we rotate through. If you still have something to say, you get a second five minutes on the subject. 10 minutes on any subject. That's enough. There are eight of us. If we all use that, we will use an enormous amount of time. And I think all of us need to come here with the mindset that we are going to be respectful and efficient with the use of everyone's time. And with that, again, I want to apologize for what I have cost this board in terms of time. And I want to apologize to Dr. Gordon for interrupting when I should have just called on John and mentioning that issue. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to miss this. Madam Chair, I didn't come in, since it was consent agenda, I never come to the board table with my mind made up. I don't, I kind of resent, and I love you, you know I do, but I do resent you telling me how I'm going to vote, and you assumed that I was going to pass everything at this table. The only thing that I had concern about was the code of student conduct. And I wanted to hear the public on that, and they did voice their opinion. But I think you know how I felt when you all went on and on about the bra strap. If you go back, I didn't say anything. I don't think anybody loved Ms. Cobert more than I do and love her husband just as much. Ms. Cobert, I begged Dr. Jenkins, there's nothing to say. We were going good when we were at home, okay? And not at home, but we're supposed to be distancing right now. There's nothing that made anybody come to that board table, other than those who want to come. I'm supposed to be distancing, okay? I've been told by the mayor and the doctors and everybody else, baby, you don't need to be out there. So if I could get the board meeting done the way we were going nicely, but everybody wanted to go back to the table, Ms. Cobert should not come back just to sit up there, when she could be at home in her house. You make me feel bad using that, because that is not fair to her. You could even tell her, Ms. Cobert, you don't have to come in. Ms. Gordon's not coming in. I don't have a husband. He passed away. So I'm telling you, we got to use common sense. We got to use common sense. I would like to say, before you make any rules, you're operating on old rules. You have to operate on the rules of the board. You cannot say 10 minutes is enough and that's it, because all of y'all went more than 10 minutes on the bra strap. And yes, I want to bring up the bra strap, because it didn't matter to me. Okay? It didn't matter. I just teach children. My children come to school any kind of way, because I have a behavior school that I love. I love that school. That's why I'm tipping out every now and then, running over there, making sure everybody's safe, so I can go in there and do some things and get it ready for school, and the next librarian coming in. I think we need to have a little meeting and decide the norms in our meetings. Are we going to talk after every speaker? You don't have the 30 minutes, you know, just a few minutes to get the public in, and I want to hear the public. Do we need a rapper? Our norms are, you don't talk, period. That was our norm. We didn't talk after any speaker. We didn't say anything. Now, I want to shut up, because you said 10 minutes. So I'm just going to shut up. But I think we need to establish our own norms. Those were the other board norms. We felt comfortable with them. No, they didn't work at the beginning. No, they didn't. But after we got the hang of it, it went, well, we need to establish our own norms in this meeting. If not, we're going to be going downhill. And all of us have something to say, and I like what you said earlier, Madam Chair. You did an excellent job in trying to run the meeting at the county, because you let everybody talk, and there were no time limits. But we don't have, we put up the box. We bought the box. We're the board. Who voted the box in? So I just want to say that. But no, I never come to the board table with my mind made up, because I definitely was going to vote this charter in tonight. But my heart couldn't convict me, because I know the people that worked hard to try to show us what was going on, and they failed. And I hate that they, I won't say they failed, because they didn't, but they did not succeed, okay? And that's all I have to say. I love you. I will always love you, but I will be correcting, whether you all want to listen or not. Y'all didn't listen to your mama. So you're going to hear it, whether you listen or not. And I'm telling you, this will help you along the way. Trust me. It helped me. The others advised me, and it sure did help me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Actually, at the County Commission, we did not have time limits. But if a board member was giving a presentation, as opposed to just engaging in dialogue, we did ask for the presentation, and we did, because of one board member, we were on the verge of adopting some guidelines, because typically, we never had a board member, honestly, that would spend more than, maybe, I don't know, five, six minutes on a subject. So it was not an issue for us. We did have one board member who got into giving presentations, sometimes very long, at which point we were like, okay, we may need to define how much time, so that we can get through our day. So I would suggest that I know what the rules were when I came in. Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to suggest that maybe you and Ms. Enval think about whether those are rules that we can bring back to the board, so there can be an official decision whether we adopt those rules. Bottom line is, I want to make sure that I'm running the meeting the way this board wants it run, okay? Thank you all.
That's it.
Meeting adjourned.